I'm gonna call the August 31st Select Board Meeting with a roll call.
Phil Coyne, President.
Smith, President.
Krantz, and I. Now, everybody's... not you, Kristen, you don't have to. All right.
Pledge of Ladies. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. So now, did you gentlemen have a chance to read the minutes of August 3rd?
I did. I called in one, a couple of minor typos to comment earlier, but after those changes, I would like to move that we approve the minutes of the Select Board Meeting of August 3rd to go to two.
I will second it.
All those in favor?
Phil Coyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz, aye. Now, I'd like to have a motion to open our public hearing regarding earth removal permit at 69 Lemmonster Road.
So move.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Phil Coyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz, aye. We don't forget each other's names this way, you know, we can just keep repeating them. Okay, well, what's come to light on this particular request is they would like to postpone or continue again, so I would entertain a motion that we postpone this earth removal permit request to date certain, September 28th, 2022.
I'll move that we postpone it to that date.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Phil Coyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz, aye. And now I entertain a motion to leave the public hearing that we didn't have.
So move.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Phil Coyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz, aye. All right, now there's a test. What's his name?
Mr. Wallace.
All right. And now, we would like to welcome Mr. Wallace, Steve Wallace.
How do you do.
Steve.
Hi, Steve.
Smith, nice to meet you.
Maureen Krantz is still.
Nice to meet you.
All right, Steve, you want to tell us a little bit about yourself, or not?
Well, here I might as well. I think for the camper that I wanted.
Oh, yeah, at the podium.
Sure.
Good call, Bill.
That's why we had him here.
Well, I've been a professional planner for over 30 years. My first 10 years were in New Hampshire, where I split my time between a regional planning commission and the New Hampshire Coastal Program. Then I came down to Central Mass and spent nine years with Central Mass Regional Planning, and my job was helping small rural towns in the hinterlands around Worcester, towns that might only get a subdivision every 10 years or so. So I did a lot of technical assistance for small towns, was a circuit rider for Rutland for a couple of years. Then I thought I'd try my hand at a larger community, and I spent two and a half years with the city of Framingham, and can't say that was my most enjoyable stop, so I jumped at the chance to move back to a more rural area, and I've been with the town of Westminster now for 11 years. When I got there, I put together a work program for them. I pretty much completed it. We started off with a three-year in-house master planning effort, then we spent the next three years revising our vintage 1970 zoning bylaw, and then development pressure got very busy, and most of my time has been spent managing the planning board's caseload. We just received funding for 50 units of senior housing behind our senior center. We've got a state-approved open space and recreation plan, a very active open space committee, a trail cleanup in June, we're gonna do another one on Saturday, October 1st. So I do a lot of work with open space committee, also do a lot of work with the Economic Development Committee, but my bread and butter task is keeping the planning board on track and functioning. I'm from New Hampshire originally, but I've been down here in Massachusetts now since Any questions you want to ask of me here?
Yes, just, I mean, I think, I talked to Bill a little bit earlier, Steve, and he was, he gave me a little summary, good summary of it, of course, one of the questions I asked him was, why are you leaving Westminster after a pretty stellar career, and why not just ride off into the sunset, you know, where you are?
Well, at this point, I'd be left doing the same thing over and over again. I think there's a lot of skills that I could bring to this job. There's a... Westminster and Sterling are very similar in terms of population, land use, tax-based composition. I've done what I could for Westminster, and just spending the next five to seven years babysitting my planning board, that doesn't really appeal to me. There's, I think I could do more, and I see an opportunity to do more here.
In Westminster, my only other question, I have a comment later, but my only question is, I think they report, you report, the planning board, you report to the town administrator, or did report to the town administrator in Westminster.
Yes.
I think, we looked at that a couple, two or three years ago, and I think we just, what we came up with was that about two-thirds, at least two-thirds, maybe three-quarters of the towns and municipalities do it that way, they have a report, although in some cases, they do report to the planning board. I don't think we've ever had any conflicts with that. A couple of questions came up in the old days, the old days, but...
Last year.
I think that it would still work fine here, I mean, we do it the same way then, in Westminster, if there were any conflicts, I would think you and the planning board would simply take it to Bill, who would take it to us, and we'd work it out, so I don't, I mean, I really don't see why there'd be any.
No, I don't see that as an issue at all. It wasn't in Westminster either. Our planning board and our select board worked very closely together, and very, very well together.
Here too, we try anyway. Hasn't always been perfect, but it's been pretty, pretty good overall, you know. I had a comment later, I'll defer to you guys for any questions.
How long do you think we're staying? That's gone.
So, yeah, I'd just like to know what your interaction was with department heads in Westminster or other communities you worked in? We pride ourselves here, we have all top-notch department heads, and we all work together very nicely.
Yeah, job one would be going around and meeting all the department heads, and talking with them about what they do and how they do it. I interact with our town departments in Westminster on a daily basis, as I'm checking with them to see if they've got comments on this or that development plan. When we get a new plan before the board, whether it be a site plan or a large subdivision, I organize a department head technical review meeting, where the department heads and I, we sit down with the applicant before the public hearing, and we iron out any technical issues, so that those are sorted out before they even come before the planning board. And I would want to do the same thing here.
Or we would encourage that, actually.
Well, I know you've got some part-timers here, so that, with the building commissioner being part-time and all, but we'll work around it, we'll find a way.
You're good, thank you.
Well, as I told you earlier, you came highly recommended by people that I know up in Westminster, and personally with myself. Are you familiar with our, have you looked at anything about Sterling, I would guess you did, about the open space and inflammation?
Yes, I did read through your master plan.
Oh, great.
I know Dominica, so I've known her for 20 years, so she, you know, when I'd see her at conferences, we'd talk about what was going on in our towns. Looked at your zoning, could use a little bit of work, we'll, we'll get on that.
Okay. Your daddy, Paige, will be glad to hear that.
I think a lot of people will be.
Yeah, right.
Well, you know, when I got to Westminster, our zoning bylaw was so disorganized, and it read like a Kafka novel, so I think we can make, streamline it, get it up to date, modernize it, make it easier to read. I'd like to do that.
Okay, get yours. And, well, in Sterling and Westminster, as you had said, I mean, years ago, we were told, I was told by one of the finance committee members, anyway, anything you're doing, look to Westminster, because of the base, everything is so similar, you know, except you seem to have more than we have, why is that? Anyway, Kristen, do you have any questions for Mr. Wallace?
No, I just want to say on behalf of the planning board, we welcome you, happy to work with you, and I'm excited to get things going with the master plan and the bylaws, with your help.
Well, I'd like to sit down with the chairman, probably short order when I get started, and talk about how to set up the meetings, and get a handle on how experienced the board is and all of that, and find out how you work, and gauge your level of knowledge and the same.
I think we'd all be happy to meet with you whenever you have the time, so reach out to any of us.
Yeah, and I'd also like to, I'd also like to have someone from the board give me a drive around Sterling, so you can point out what makes Sterling a special place.
Sure, anyone of us will be happy to do that with you.
That'd be great.
Now, Richard Mackey is a member of the Economic Development Committee. Richard, do you have any questions for Mr. Wallace?
Well, obviously, welcome to Sterling, appreciate your attendance here. We've worked with your predecessors pretty closely in the past. There was some work on the zoning, and we still have more work to do there. In terms of development in town, you know, we have some spots that we need some help with, and, you know, there are some opportunities that I hope, you know, we'll be able to develop in the future.
Okay, I'd like to get with all of the board's commissions and committees in town to find out who does what and how they do it, so I'm gonna want to get with you folks, talk about what your priorities are. I'd like to show you some of the things I did in Westminster, see if you folks want to do that as well, so we'll talk.
Excellent. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. So can I go to the brick now?
And I'll have the fish taco to go. Yeah, thank you so much, Stephen, for coming in and letting people know the who, what, and when of your position. We absolutely look forward to you coming in, starting with your thinking October 1st.
The last Friday in October. I've gotta stay through, I gotta stay in Westminster through the early part of October to get them set up for the special town meeting in November, then I want to take a couple weeks off, decompress, but the first Friday in October was my target date.
So you're coming in to work a half a day?
Just to drop off my boxes and get organized, be ready bright and early the following Monday.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So I do want to close by saying, my office will be open anytime you folks want to drop by and talk about all things planning, so please feel free to do just that.
Thank you.
Bill, I'll get together with you in a couple of weeks, and we'll fill out all the paperwork and all of that.
Well, I would entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Stephen Wallace as our next town planner.
So move.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Any further discussion?
Oh, that's right, I forgot, you have more comments.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, on behalf of everybody, I mean, the resume and the cover letter touched all the bases regarding what we're looking for, so I'm very happy with the experience. I also note that you made one comment that you're comfortable working with diverse and often opposing interest groups, we'll try to challenge you on that. We do have some ornery people in Sterling, mostly Clinton and Sterling, but we have them everywhere, so, I mean, I think it's gonna be a smooth transition, and I'm very, very glad you've picked our town to finish your career, so, thank you for that.
Okay.
I'm ready to go.
All right. All those in favor?
Phil Coyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz, aye. Thank you again, Stephen.
Thank you.
Good night, folks.
Have a good meal at work. We just came home.
Always a good meal. Anna, welcome to Sterling.
Right.
Smith, nice to meet you.
Maureen Krantz.
John, Phil Coyne, Anna, pleased to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks for coming again.
Tell us a little bit about yourself, Anna.
Okay, so I got my Bachelor of Science degree from Unity College in Maine, so it was Wildlife and Fisheries Management, so I always knew I wanted to do mostly field work, so I mostly did internships for the last, the next couple of years after I graduated, or actually during and then after, a lot of wildlife surveying. And then after that, after I graduated, I took a position with Davy Resource Group, contracted through the USDA, surveying for the Asian Longhorn Beetle here in Worcester County, so, like, I think over just about three years, I was working with them, doing a lot of surveying, and even quality control reports, just for the surveyed areas, so that's mostly my experience, is just a lot of, a lot of field work, a lot of surveying, and then I have delved into a lot of administrative work as well, when needed, in creating reports or just filing and whatnot. I don't have a lot of permitting experience, I will say, but I find myself a quick learner, I believe, but yes.
And I believe Matt Morrow's gonna hang around a bit.
Oh, yeah, I talked to him this morning, and just trying to figure out, like, when to, because my first day is September 12th, and we're just figuring out a time, and he's just very excited, and he said it's gonna be a blast, so, he seems very enthusiastic.
Well, and he's very, you know, we mentor for you, you know, it sounds like it. Wild, and a lot of different communities too, so. John, do you have any questions?
You've met with the Conservation Commission here in Sterling, right? Or have you?
Barbara and Matt.
I actually haven't met, I haven't met Matt, we, we were on the phone, so I've only heard his voice, I haven't physically met him yet, no.
But you sat with Barbara and Bill and then Matt on the phone?
Yes.
How far, I mean, it's not a prohibitive drive, is it, from Drakehead down to West Sterling, I don't know how far that is.
That's like 35 minutes, but this is actually a super-familiar area for me, because with the Asian Longhorn Beetle project, I literally surveyed down the road, so this is a very familiar area, I've been in these woods, so it's, it's pretty normal to me, actually, I don't mind it at all.
This is a part-time position.
Yes.
So I see in your resume here, you did some research and some studying with some bats.
Yes.
That could come in quite handy, because our Girl Scout troop in town is building bat houses and gonna install them as part of a project, so.
I've installed bat houses, and I just surveyed them, like, we would just, like, go in the woods and set up, like, sonar equipment, but I've also, like, in doing that, installed, like, very, very high-up, like, bat boxes, but also alongside buildings and whenever necessary, but it's fun.
That is actually, as David said, a Girl Scout project in town over on Muddy Pond Road, so, I know that this is a first step, really, for you into something a little bit different, which I applaud your, your energy and your forward-thinking about your career, and like I said, I think Matt will be a good mentor for you, and you have some very knowledgeable people on the Conservation Board also, so, wish you all the success.
Thank you. I have always known conservation is my career, so this is the right steps I would be taking, so.
We expect you to be here for about 20 years.
You'd be blessed, I reckon.
Yeah, right, Matt's record, so, and Matt is gonna retain his position as ADA for the time being, so that's one thing off the plate that you don't have to think about. So I'd entertain a motion to appoint Anna Petry, is that right, Petry?
Petry.
Petry? To the position of a conservation agent.
So move.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Phil Coyne, aye.
Krantz, aye.
Further discussion?
Oh, further discussion? Jesus, you guys have a lot to say. Yes, David?
I don't have any, I was just...
I have none.
Went of order.
Oh, David, well, depend on John.
I like that.
Do you want to say anything?
No, I'm awesome, thank you for applying, and I wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Phil Coyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz, aye. Anna, anything you need, just come right up and see Bill.
Right.
A bit of buzz.
No one else, it's just him.
Buzz, yeah, now, if you need us for anything too, just...
Absolutely.
See Bill. Okay? Thank you, safe drive home.
Thank you.
Race coming up, huh?
Yeah, I don't think anybody's here yet, but, I think, driveway permit?
Yes.
Okay. Why not, what did I do?
Huh?
That's not mine.
Oh, no, she was getting my attention.
Oh.
Nothing.
Is that difficult to do? Get his attention? Okay, we're gonna skip down to number eight, just, if you'd like, I mean...
Sure, sure, yeah.
Okay, which is a driveway permit. Permit for entranceway to public waste, yeah. And this is up on Justice Hill?
Correct.
Is this the part of the bigger project up there, or are you on your own?
Well, yeah, it's the, it's the old orchard land that's been split up, so it's one of the lots there.
Any questions, gentlemen?
Were there sign-offs necessary? I assume there were from the fire department, I don't know if Conservation had a sign-off or, I don't think they did, the fire department usually does, I didn't see that.
It was submitted to them, I know that.
I beg your pardon?
It was submitted to the fire department, I know that, and I was told that the Conservation didn't have to.
Yeah, my understanding is that they did sign off on it, and that the only concern that people generally had was the stone wall removal, it's part of the scenic roads in Sterling, so, you know, be careful for that, as you well know. Is there anything that you need us to, anything you want to point out to us?
No, I just thought I would show up, I know I didn't have to, but I just figured I would in case there were any questions.
Of course you had to.
Oh, okay.
So, the diagram is right there on page three?
Right. Well, just the first page, it had the questions, will this entrance require disturbing an existing rock wall? And it says no, but then under the conditions of approval, it does describe, where it says maximum width of stone wall removal shall be 18 feet, so, it seemed like that question, it seems like a stone wall is being altered or changed up there.
Yeah, so, when I talked to, I talked to several people, my understanding was if I went more than 18 feet, then I had to go through a different approval process, if I keep it under 18 feet, I didn't have to, so, it will be under 18 feet, and actually the rock will stay there, all we're gonna do is just open it up, and have the rock kind of be like a V shape as the driveway opens up, so the rock's not gonna be removed, it'll just, it'll just be opened up, and it'll be, they'll stay there.
As long as the fire, I mean, this is weird, it's a little beyond my understanding, but when I see where the driveway's going, based on the curve, the angle of the road itself, I guess if the fire department's okay, and it's not, it's not unsafe, then I'm fine with that, but that's why I asked that question.
Absolutely, and I, we had our civil engineer design it to meet or exceed those specs, so it should be, there should be no problem.
David?
I have no questions.
Do you want this, this too also? Mr. King, did you meet your new neighbor?
No, I haven't.
Hi, Jim Morris, nice to meet you.
Mr. King, I live on Elliott.
Okay.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Whenever you need rocks, you can have some of mine.
Listen, I gotta, it should be called Rock Hill Road, not Justice Hill Road.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to grant the permit to Mr. Morris for the 170 Justice Hill Road driveway permit.
Yep, so move.
Yes.
Could you please approve that with the conditions of approval?
Yeah.
Sure.
Based on the other sign-offs.
Based on the conditions of approval, which is what we just talked about.
Okay, sure.
The maximum width of the stone wall removal shall be 18 feet, if you go any more than that during construction, you must restore the opening to be no greater than 18 feet.
Understood.
All right?
Yep, good, so move.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Phil Coyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz, aye. Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Okay, thanks so much.
Yep, good luck.
Thank you.
What do we need to do to get this process sort of a little more streamlined? I mean, really, we should have an, we should have an application in front of us, if police has to sign off on line of sight, and fire department has to sign off on accessibility. I mean, really, we should have one document that has all this stuff in front of us when it gets to this point.
No, we did.
We did have that at one point.
We do.
That's why, because it was the document that had two necessary sign-offs on it.
We shouldn't have to ask you if the fire department signed off on this, we should have that.
No, but we can ask Kama, she knows everything.
You're welcome, Kama.
All right, and then we have a barefoot half marathon, which...
Talk to her when I choose.
Which they're looking for, is an event, and it's actually on Sunday, September 4th, which is this Sunday, so, but because we hadn't met earlier, it starts 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and it's a 5K, 10K half marathon, expect 25 people. They actually run barefoot? Oh my God. All ready. So, there's Matt, right here, where they're gonna start, basically at the campground, yes, Kama.
And I do want to note that this actually was an event last year.
Yes.
They had maybe, I don't know, 13 people.
Yeah. Not a big event, but...
It started pretty early, huh, 6:00 AM?
6 o'clock, John, guess you won't be running in, huh?
I'll be busy cooking.
Yeah, right. All right, so they've already contacted the police, and they're fine with the plan, there's temporary signage going up in the morning, and they'll be removing it after the event, there will be teams and volunteers, all the right things they're doing, so. Any questions on that?
As long as the police, I mean, have looked at it, which they have, and haven't, you know, determined any problems with traffic, there's nobody out at that hour, so I gotta, you know, I gotta think it's fairly safe, so, I'm good with it, Maureen, I don't think there's, it's a small, it's a small race anyway, you know.
Yes, very small, and 6 to 10. So I'd entertain a motion to approve the application of barefoot half marathon to happen this Sunday, starting at 6:00 AM.
Yep, I'll make that motion to approve the request.
Second it.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
David?
So it doesn't really pertain to this particular event, but once again, this is a form that we should have somewhat streamlined, not rely on the fact that where the police contacted, and they say yes. How do we know for sure, honestly?
Because it wouldn't be in front of us. You're not a very trusting person, are you?
I ran my own business for many years, you know, I'm not very trusting, but that's all, I just, just a comment.
But David, you can take any of these applications, be my, you would like.
I'll give him the comma.
Nice. No, actually, like, the driveway permitting thing, that actually comes through the building department.
No, actually, like the driveway permitting thing, that actually comes through the building department,
ZBA and that type of thing. I don't know what happened to the cover on that, where the police and fire did sign off on it. On this application, usually it comes through the recreation department, so you could talk to Sherri about that, 'cause I do believe she has a sign-off sheet on it also, with the police and the fire. But they've done everything that they, they've been asked to do as far as providing a map view, and the information necessary, how many people, the insurance, et cetera, and so on. If you wanna streamline it, you go ahead.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Bill, coin, aye.
Krantz and aye? All right. Now, we have the North Gate building permit, which is an ongoing thing, and we have a, some recommendations actually from Bill.
We've received some guidance from town council, so there's a little summary of it at the top, but the recommendation from town council is that, you know, we should give some guidance to the ZBA, so those would be there at the bottom, that, you know, the original permit, number building one, was based on the ten dollars per thousand cost of construction calculation. It should be the same, it's a part of the comprehensive permit, so I think it's eleven, eleven million and change, somewhere in there, eleven million, seven twenty, so that permit should be, be in line with that. I don't know what your thought is, but my recommendation, there should be no other discounts or fees, there's similar forty B projects going on in town that are, you know, paying the full boat, so to speak. Any new building permits that come in should be under the new schedule that you approved last year, and we should refer this over to town council to work with the developer and their attorney to, you know, it's finished up, and ZBA can make their decisions down the road, but ultimately, the authority is with the ZBA, but we can make our, you know, recommendations based on being the building commissioners appointing authority.
Yeah, they actually asked for it, the ZBA.
They have, they've asked for town council's opinion, town council's recommended, we send our recommendations over, so...
Okay. John?
It seemed like in the emails back and forth a few weeks ago, Carolyn Maury, I think that's her, her recommendation, if I could read it right, was that we do it this way, and not try to push the new rate on the builder or developer.
Because they had a comprehensive permit from the beginning.
Right.
They should be under the same rate for the three buildings. Based on the cost of construction, not the same rate for the first building as the others.
Yeah, I don't think it's wise to fight that, incur more expense and wind up at the same place at the end of the road, so I think, yeah, it's a good summary, Bill, appreciate it, and I think, I think it's a good recommendation to not, you know, to tell the ZBA, you know, "We're with you, and we don't expect you to waive any fees or anything else at this point in time, and any new developments will be under the more revised format."
Yeah, they started this, you know, many years ago, and finally got their comprehensive permit, so, you know, it was at a different rate, so let's roll with it based on the cost of construction for the three buildings.
Looked at, Madam Chair, any more questions? I think it's a good recommendation.
I would agree with John, and, you know, we're gonna spend a lot of money, I think.
Spend a lot of money.
Well, there's a couple of good points also, in that it's a comprehensive permit, so what the town can and can't do is limited anyway, as far as, they have the state inspectors that actually go in there and do the inspections, et cetera, and so on, so I'm fine with this, just to get it, you know, Legals looked at it? I can't argue with Legal. Yes, all right, I'm fine with it, so I would entertain a motion that we move this forward.
One amendment should be in there, that's the cost of construction on each building, the ten dollars per thousand.
Okay, so, you want...
I just had one, one misstatement, not misstatement, but lack of statement.
Recommend to the ZBA that the town continue with the building permits for North Gate, based on the ten dollar per thousand calculation, cost of construction.
Yes.
This would be a total fee of one hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred dollars, with no further discounts or fees waived, and new developments will follow the updated fee schedule as approved last year, and once the select board takes their votes on the matter, refer it to town council. So our vote is actually to just refer, we agree with this, refer it to town council, and notify the ZBA.
Send it over to them as well.
Yes, absolutely.
What's the updated rate, thirteen dollars per...
Thirteen seventy-five?
Yeah, okay, all right, that's fine. As long as they don't come back to us looking for another addition under the same...
No, this, this should be it.
Couple of meetings ago, we updated the comprehensive permit, because the first version of it had the ownership and condos in there, so we updated to the rental units for the two hundred and twelve, and this, you know, should clarify where we think things should stand, which is, you know, the cost of construction should be each, based on each building, should be the ten dollars per thousand.
Okay. So you wanna vote on that?
I think that would help.
Okay. Intertain a motion to move forward with the recommendations presented to us tonight, by Bill, and suggested by legal counsel, to give the ZBA this guidance.
We accept the recommendations as just written, just described.
Executive, with the, you know, small amendment in there.
Yes, that I read out loud.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Bill, coin, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz and aye. Okay, and as you may or may not know, our last meeting, we did have somebody from Maya that kinda scared the bejesus out of everyone, with regards to fair insurance, in that they, she didn't have all of the correct information as far as who was insured, what was insured, et cetera, and so on, so Kama, Bill, Doug, all met with her, and came up with somewhat of a solution, but it also had to include the owners of the airport, which on that, that little piece, I will say, Kama went above and beyond, and I do have a letter here, Doug Downey apologizing for not reading this in person, he's at a meeting downstairs right now, it's their last meeting before the fair, but he wanted me to publicly thank our senior executive assistants, Kama Jean, for her efforts with working with all parties involved in the insurance for the fair. Kama had worked hard on this for many years, this last year brought a very big last-minute challenge to securing insurance for the fair, and the fair committee is fortunate that Kama took this on to support the fair. So, that's all about you, Kama, so...
Good to hear.
And we did reach out, or Kama did reach out, to Gail Ferrera from the airport, and Gail has said that she will go along with this for this year, but we will need to revisit it for next year, because...
Need discussion of insurance.
Yes, like, and I've already told Mr. Downey that we need to get busy on this, basically, you know, November, you know, get, start the cover, start the talking, go out, reach out ourselves to see what kinda coverage we actually need, 'cause there has been conflicting reports from different towns, but right now, this, Gail has agreed to coverage, which is only twenty percent of the coverage provided six years ago, which we all know is crazy, but, anyway, she has agreed to accept the coverage of one point five, or three million in aggregate at this late date, but respectfully request that any discussion of the fair next year be planned for liability coverage of five to ten million, which is about, at this point in the game, is about twenty-four thousand dollars. Anyway, or up to thirty-one, so...
Yeah, so they are shopping the insurance, we got an email from Joanne just this evening that they are hoping to have back some things tomorrow, that we can make that work. But obviously, you know, we're, we're right up against the timeline with Labor Day, and Fair, Fair are two weekends away.
Right now, even talking the way we are, is that about eighty-four, eight thousand?
Eighty-four hundred was the one million and two million, it's gonna be a little bit more with the increase limits.
Yeah, so, love insurance companies. But anyway, that's, that's the situation where we are right now, there is nothing to, to really vote on or talk about, but we may have to come in and sign off on...
Do you wanna do number ten or eleven while you're here on this topic?
Are we leaving? Oh, okay.
Same, same general idea.
So we can sign this portion of it, now without having all the facts from the insurance company?
Well, we need to, we can sign this, because she signed it, and we would be amenable to this if by chance our insurance agent is not able to make this happen, it may have to increase a little, but you can take a vote, they say that, you know, we will sign this and support whatever the town administrator thinks is...
It will, it will be this at the very least, if not more, because they may not be able to do it in the half million increment, so it may have to be a two million and three.
All right. So I would entertain a motion that we sign off on the hold harmless agreement, and the fair committee agreement, as written.
So moved.
Executive.
Any further discussion?
Looks like we're gonna be getting more information pretty quickly on the final policy.
All right.
Nothing we can do about that.
Well, and that being said, know that one of the things that the fair committee did do, and I would encourage everybody to chip in, is they have increased their cost on their pins. It went from three dollars to five dollars, still a bargain at any, any other fair, I mean, everybody else. And I know some people are saying, "Oh, well, you oughta, you know, do something about the charge for parking," but as we all know, that's been discussed over the years, and it's a very difficult thing to do because of location, so, anyway, all those in favor?
Bill, coin, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz and aye. All right, so, and Bill, both Bill and Kama will keep us updated on that?
Yes.
Okay, and then, back to the fair, our next agenda item is to approve the common vic license and vendor permits for the Sterling Fair. Here, it says, "See below," so this will be posted...
They're all on your agenda.
They're, well, yeah, I know they're on the agenda, I'm talking to the general public, don't you?
Leave it.
Anyway, we, if anybody interested can find the vendors on, and the common vics on our website. So I would entertain a motion that we approve the common vic and the vendors, with the addition of the funky stuff vendor, as written.
So moved.
Executive.
Any further discussion? You don't wanna know what funky stuff is all about?
I was gonna ask, but I'm afraid you'll yell at me if I ask another question. Funky, that sounds good.
There are some interesting vendors out there, which makes the fair that much more fun.
It does, it'll be, it's great to see the Sterling firefighter, as well, sushi and back, the little beef sandwiches, the whole thing, it's nice, exciting.
And on the same note, the senior center is running the senior vans on Saturday. This is part of the age and dementia friendly efforts in town, so just check the schedule for the vans, give them a call, show up to senior center, hop on a van, they'll bring you over to the fairgrounds. All those, oh, we're not voting, yeah, all those in favor?
Bill, coin, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz and aye. All right. And then, number ten is kind of a no-brainer, it's a proclamation from the town of Sterling to actually support the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection. So it's a proclamation that we support the children's cancer for the month of September, right? Yeah, September, October is breast cancer. But this is a situation that was founded twenty years ago by Steve Firestain, a member of the Philip, I can't even read this, Kama, it's way too small. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children, Inc., and Kids Cancer Connection, Inc., provide a variety of vital patients psycho-social services to children undergoing cancer treatment at UMass Memorial Children's Medical Center, Dana Farber Children's Hospital Cancer Center, Mass General Hospital for Children, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. Whereas towards uniquely sensitive and comforting magical caps for kids program, the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection distributes thousands of beautifully handmade caps and decorated baseball caps to children who want to protect their heads from the trauma of chemo, surgery, and/or radiation treatments. So, basically, we're just supporting that as far as a town goes, and it goes the month of September, so from September first, to the end of the month. Signed by the Board of Sluggmen, excuse me, the SLUG Board.
So it's, it's automatic, move to approve the proclamation, the month of September, as childhood cancer awareness month for our town.
Executive.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Bill, coin, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz and aye. It's kind of an easy one. And then, we have a note for Mr. Fox, Chair of the ZBA, and it seems that Gail Bergeron wishes to discontinue serving as a regular member of the ZBA, and would instead serve as an associate member. And their current associate member, Everett Pierce, is willing to accept the appointment as a regular member of the board. Accordingly, Patrick requests that the SLUG Board appoint Everett Pierce as a member of the zoning board of appeals for a full term, and appoint Gail Bergeron as an associate member of the board. Any questions, answers, input? Both, both Gail and Everett show up at the ZBA meetings anyway, but Gail does have some personal commitment she has to take care of, so...
I'm fine with this.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion that we appoint Everett Pierce as a member of the ZBA for a full term.
So moved.
Executive.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Bill, coin, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz and aye. And I would also entertain a motion that we appoint Gail Bergeron as an associate member of the ZBA board.
So moved.
Executive.
All those in favor?
Bill, coin, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz and aye. All of you. And we can, well, you know what, while we're, we're talking about boards and committees and appointments, et cetera, and so on, we did receive a resignation to the, what's with the buzzing?
I don't hear it.
I don't hear anything.
So full of it. Seriously.
He really doesn't hear it.
He really doesn't hear it, great. I got two deaf ones next to me now, this is great, such good news.
How we fortunate.
Oh, Jesus. Anyway, so Elizabeth Suter, who was on the, on the finance committee, has sent us a resignation. She just has a lot going on in her life, she's not been, she has not recovered a hundred percent from her illness last year, and her energy levels are low, she doesn't feel as though she can make the commitment to be on the finance committee, so that's bad news for Joe, but we have good news, Joe. So, that's bad news for Joe, but we have good news, Joe, right?
We do.
Yes, so we have a couple of people that, hopefully, in the very near future, um, Joe and Mr. Pecat will be back and, uh, let us know who they have for the finance board and the capital committee. So when it gets to that point, we also have to include the town moderator, as you know, Jennifer, so...
So we're taking that business up on the eighth, our first FinCon meeting is on the eighth, and the business we're dealing with is the volunteer candidates that have come forward for both the, the CDC, where we have one candidate, and we have two candidates for the FinCon, which is very popular.
Yep, and that's September eighth?
September eighth.
What time's your meeting?
Seven forty-five.
Oh, Thursday night, because you know I couldn't make it, right?
No, we...
I get it.
We argued around, finally ended up with that date, that's...
All right, I'm sure one of my counterparts will make it, right, John?
You're most welcome.
I can't, I have to work, someone must work for a living, Joe. Or, I haven't quite figured out what the reason is that I work, but, all right. So are you still looking for some more people, or?
We absolutely are, that, that, if we accept the two candidates for FinCon, that'll be our number, uh, bring our number to six, and we could use seven.
Yes.
Uh, and on the CDC, that'll bring our number to five, and we could entertain two more, which we would encourage.
Okay.
We're still looking, we're always looking.
All right, and those candidates are the same ones that Kama has, the volunteer applications?
Yes, all the applications have been submitted.
All right, well, just so people know, finance and, and capital are not the only people looking for additional members. Um, so if that's not something you're interested in, please feel free to come on down, fill out a volunteer application for any one of the other committees that are out there. I mean, I know Economic Development was looking for someone, we've got a couple of resignations there, you know, there's always room on recreation, uh, so there's, there's some good stuff out there if anybody's interested.
I just happen to be here and be vocal, so...
We'd love to have you here. How many, how many people can say they have a king in their presidency? Seriously, princes, yes, king, not so much. So now we have the town administrators updating.
So you took care of the boards and committees piece, my usual announcement.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I steal your thunder?
Uh, yeah, heartbroken.
All right, I bet.
Uh, last meeting, we had talked about the Safe Streets for All grant through MRPC, well, it's a federal grant, but MRPC was going to put that together. We had sent off a letter of support, um, since our last meeting, uh, the chair had signed. Uh, we had received, more than a year ago, a shared spaces grant for the downtown area. Um, we are working on, uh, getting that finalized to figure out what's, what's eligible and what isn't. Uh, that one was kind of, uh, left out in the cold with some of the transitions. Um, obviously, you know, you've probably seen and/or heard of the drainage and eventual paving up in the Kendall Hill area, um, so just be aware that there's going to be some traffic and whatnot backups up there, whatnot backups up there.
It doesn't involve blasting, does it? They wouldn't blast for any of this.
No, shouldn't be. And, uh, we are getting the final, or we have the majority of the final report, um, from the comp study, including the job description, so I'm going through those to make sure everything was updated as we asked, and then we could have the final report given to us, um, as we get through that, but I want to verify that all of the things are correct before we, um, close things out.
Yeah, that didn't move along as well as one of, what I expected.
I wouldn't call it speedy.
No? No, too long.
Uh, after this weekend, we should be starting the demo on the playground at the school and the installation, so that should probably take a few weeks. Um, have a call into a couple engineers to see if we can get the proposals to do the, uh, lift and elevator at the library. The chocks at school has been refloored in the hallways, uh, hoping they're going to wait until next year, uh, kind of ran out of time. Uh, nothing new on the storage building, uh, behind the police station. Peg's Pond, Monty Tech students are going to do the memorial wall, we're getting quotes from a couple of different landscapers, uh, hoping to receive one this week, and we have a meeting on it Friday with another one to get our three quotes, um, but we are getting close on that work. Uh, they will be doing some of the roof testing and cuts, uh, for the roofing project, uh, next week. Um, for this building, the project probably won't happen until the spring, but, uh, getting a, getting a lot of the things out of the way that we need to.
Bill, one quick, uh, when they do that, is, uh, do we have money set aside if they recommend any interim work for the, to prevent damage during the winter while we're waiting for the...
Yeah, so they're going to do the asbestos testing all the way down for everything they're going to pull off, um, if we need to do something, we probably can, but we did some patching last year, so it should be all set, um, but we can check into that.
Shame, this is something go, you know, haywire in the winter.
Based, based on the estimates, we should have, uh, enough funding.
Thank you.
Even if we had to do, even if we had to do some remediation. Uh, Town Beach, Mr. Mackey, do you have any, uh, comments?
We received, we're happy to receive the comments from the Mass DDP, and a couple of recommendations that we'll take into consideration, we've already shared that, uh, with the, uh, local conservation commission, and we're moving forward.
Okay, so it's moving forward, uh, on the vandalism piece, we have, as of today, or yesterday, installed the, uh, a couple cameras up there, so hopefully, uh, that may be some bit of a deterrent. They are live and working with motion, motion lines on them too. Um, so we've ordered a lot of the furniture for the eighteen-thirty-five, there may be a little discrepancy on the chairs, um, the eighteen-thirty-five committee has made their recommendation to me, um, so hopefully it will be furnished, uh, next month or so. Nothing new on eight, uh, sixty-two and one-forty, uh, Maple Street sidewalks, that design is going on, and, uh, things are, things are moving forward with the downtown project. Um, I know Comcast is looking to give us an updated price on the varying of utilities, is the most late, uh, the latest update, so, pretty good shape. Obviously, we've got the planner and the conservation agent, which have taken off the list, so...
Yeah, that's a good thing.
We're fully staffed right now.
Bill, uh, the minutes of the prime, uh, previous meeting, or just, I guess, when I read them, uh, do we, should we be thanking somebody, and when I read it again, I was, it was kind of a surprise, month, three weeks ago we last met, but the Mass Department of Transportation selected Sterling as part of the state's transportation bond bill municipal pavement program. The state's going to be paving portions of locally owned roads such as one-forty and sixty-two. That, I mean, that was a real surprise when I read that, and it reminded me of it today. Do, I don't know if that, who's doing, if that was Dick or you, collaboration of people, but do we owe any thank you to people at the Mass Department of Transportation for picking us? I don't know how they pick us.
I think it was a bit of a surprise to Ryan, so, you guys have, was that a joint, was that a, uh, MRPC thing?
The information came from our, from our PC, I passed it on to Ryan, Ryan followed up on it right away, and he was a little surprised that, uh...
It actually happened?
That it actually happened, that it happened quickly, and it's in the name of five-hundred-thousand dollars worth of repairs on sixty-two and one-fourth segments of it.
When you get something, infusion of cash like that, it's a fitting throw. I didn't know if John Gulliver, uh, you know, he was involved in that at all, I know he helped with the, uh, cutting the grass down at the, uh, you know, around the rotaries up and down, but I mean, I...
We can certainly send something off.
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt, because that's, that's no positive thing, you know? All right, just, sorry to belabor the meeting any longer than I did.
No problem. We got nothing going on. David?
Good evening.
Good evening, David, thank you for coming.
So, I might get a few things I'd just like to discuss.
What?
This is our first meeting since Cookout, our employee appreciation day, and I just want to thank all the employees that showed up and, and all the help in putting the event on. It was a great, great turnout, it was a great day, we had the, beautiful weather.
Becky and Patrice, to, you know, and the DPW.
Everybody, yeah.
A bang-up job, as far as that goes. Mr., Mr. Kilcoyne got a, you know, chance to sit down, you know, visit with people.
Right, put his speed up.
Well, he couldn't get dirty, oh, I'll go there, David.
It was a hot day, though.
And, no kidding.
It was a hot day, and, and since we are going there, you could have got some experience as a line cook, but you didn't choose to participate.
Yeah, but I, I didn't think of it then, I already suggested this, and it's going to be, thinking I have to see what my wife thinks about something like this proposal, a line cook.
Well, when we were cleaning up, I was looking around, saying, anybody see Mr. Kilcoyne? Nope.
Give you a lot of credit slaving over that, uh...
Fortunately, he brought that one bag of ice.
Yeah, that was great, thank you for the ice.
Okay, yeah, David. Okay, so the, the next thing is, because I'm trying to drag this meeting out more than an hour.
Because he's done one of the best.
Obviously, the Sterling Fair is upcoming.
Yeah.
There's a couple of, um, town officials are going to be in the dunk booth, so if you're not happy with, uh, forking over your tax money to the tax collector, rumor is the tax collector's going to be in the booth on Saturday, September tenth, from eleven to noon.
Oh, I work.
Followed by myself in the dunk booth from noon to one.
God bless it.
So, coming down.
Which is a little hard, it's going to be done, too.
So, yeah, so it's, uh...
You guys, thanks so much.
We're getting some, some town official involvement, which is nice.
That is nice.
I already told Doug, it's cold and raining, I'm not doing it.
Yeah, okay, and, um...
How are you going to be, uh?
Uh, I've got swimmer's ear.
One, one more thing, uh, once again, a special thank you to Kama Jean for all she has done in the last few weeks, uh, she's had some personal struggles, and she's a trooper and fought through it, so thank you, Kama, we appreciate it.
And, oh, look at, Ms. Page decided to show up.
Was it on the meeting?
Yeah, uh-huh, anyway, one, one, uh, kind of, you know, I don't know, I, I, well, it's actually kind of sad, we lost, uh, Jan Goetzman, um, with the restructuring of the whole, uh, Mister Telegram and, and all of that, uh, Jan was let go after thirty-plus years, and I personally am going to miss her, because she did so much for our community as far as keeping us out there, um, doing pictures, uh, calling me to tell me when I was doing something wrong, um, but she was full of good advice most of the time, so I think as a town and a community, she is truly going to be missed, and we're not only, we're not the only town suffering from it. You'll probably see the landmark go next, um, they've already shut down the gardener, uh, is it gardener? Uh, one of the other towns papers, so they're slowly going away, uh, that news, and you're going to have to depend on, uh, you know, Facebook for all your community news, I guess, I don't know. But Jan, thank you for all you've done all these years, and I doubt you're watching tonight because you don't have to do it anymore, but I really appreciate everything she's done.
She was a fair and honest reporter, she did a great job.
Definitely fair.
You know, it's easy to talk to her, and you knew, she grew trustworthy, so, I don't know, can't say anything better.
No. All right, so with that being said, Ms., Ms. Page, would you have anything you would like to add to our meeting?
I do not, I'm just sorry to solve it.
Yes. Well, you just are meeting our new town planner, and she was, oh, you are, madam.
I have, yeah.
And, Richard, anything from you?
Nothing, Richard.
Okay, Mr. King, anything more?
Nothing additional.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, Ms. Becky?
I have nothing.
Kama? And I ditto David's, uh, under some stressful circumstances. Thank you. Bill?
Yes, ma'am.
And I would entertain a motion that we adjourn.
What type of motion?
Seconded.
Any further discussion?
Sterling Fair coming up, September ninth, tenth, and eleventh.
That's right.
Buy your pens and shawls.
Buy your pens, buy your t-shirts, we got insurance bills to pay. All those in favor?
Aye, Kilcoyne, aye.
Sit back.
Great job to, uh, Bill and Patty for finding our town planner, and all people involved with that, that's, and conservation agent as well.